City of Salem, Massachusetts. The City Council Committee on Community and Economic Development co-posted with the Committee of the Whole will meet in council chambers on May 20th, 2024 at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing three public guide ordinance amendments. Notice of this meeting was posted on May 13th, 2024 at 4:00 PM. Absent from the committee are Counselor Jerusalem. And also from the Committee of the Whole, we have in attendance Counselor Proznowski, Counselor Watsonfeld, Counselor Merkel, Counselor Cohen, Counselor Hopworth, and Counselor Mercilo. Thanks, everyone, for joining tonight. So tonight, we have on the agenda the three public guide ordinance amendments. This is all amending our public guide ordinance, but broken out into three pieces. The first is an ordinance that is amending the portion relative to public guides, application requirements, badges, and prohibitions, and revocation. The second one that we'll discuss this evening is the ordinance amendment relative to the fee schedule, so fees for public guides. And then the third ordinance amendment we have in front of us this evening is on the noncriminal disposition of ordinance violations, penalties for violations for public guide licenses. So also in attendance this evening, we have from the City of Salem, Mayor Pangalo. We also have the city solicitor Beth Renard. We have from the Salem Police Department Sergeant Ball, and we have our special events project director Jeremy Fisk, special events manager. I won't say formerly Allen, but I did. So thank you, everyone, for joining this evening for this topic. I wanted to make sure we were able to get a meeting in before the busy season started, although I drove around this weekend and today, and I'm not quite sure if I was able to squeeze that in before, but definitely before the summertime started and our fall season picked up. So since we do have in attendance this evening, the mayor, if you'd like to say a few words around the amendments that you submitted to council?
Thank you. And I apologize, I'm going to have to depart after this for a school committee meeting, but I appreciate the opportunity to just kind of share a higher level perspective about some of these changes, which Counselor Stott already outlined for you. These are based on feedback that have been gathered over the last several years from tour companies, neighborhood associations, members of the city council, past and present. Many of these were previewed for you at the after-action meeting that was held several months ago, three months ago in February, about tons of happenings. I'll say one of the most consistent points of feedback that we've heard over the years around tours is related to improving enforcement. So as many of you know, the FY25 budget does have an additional enforcement personnel line to help with this work and to fund it. So to help fund that, as well as the escalating costs of enforcement efforts, there's a proposal for you this evening to consider an increase in the licensing fee. So the number of licenses that were given out when this ordinance was first adopted in 2006 was 28, and we're up to about 176 so far this year. While the number of licensed guides has increased over those 18 years, the license fee has not. The fee's not changed, but the cost for enforcement has increased since 2006. And again, as you may recall from the budget presentation, we hope to add additional enforcement personnel going forward in the new fiscal year. For the city to be able to effectively enforce the rules, we need adequate resources to do so, and I don't believe that we should be asking residents to provide those through their property taxes. Currently, the enforcement of our ordinance is being subsidized by taxpayers. The change that's before you would move us away from that model. In our current fee structure, applicants pay a $10 annual license fee and a $30 annual examination fee. Applying that $40 amount to the 176 licensees, the total revenue collected comes to $7,040. The cost for administering and enforcing this ordinance in the past year, however, was $54,400. And I think that will be able to provide some more details around the specifics of that cost. That includes personnel time, that includes materials and supplies. The difference between that $7,000 that's collected in the fee and the $54,000 of implementation is being borne by our general fund, by the taxpayers. As you know, this year, we're proposing addition of that enforcement personnel around $7,000 for the season, as well as additional safety briefings for the industry. The total projected cost to administer and enforce the ordinance for this year will be about $62,500. If we don't change the licensing fee amount and we leave it at the 2006 levels, we're effectively asking the taxpayers to contribute that roughly $55,000 difference as a public subsidy, and I don't believe that's appropriate. So the proposal before you adjusts that fee in tiers based on the size of the group and provides also an incentive to reduce it with a discount if the applicant foregoes the use of amplification. As with all of the fee proposals that are before you as part of the budget process this year, so there are fee changes proposed for building, electrical, and fire prevention as well, my goal going forward will be to ensure that fee studies are done as part of an annual budget setting process. And we're not waiting years, in this case, 18 years, in between adjustments. It should be a more regular exercise. Briefly, there's also a proposal to increase the fines for violations. This is, again, intended to encourage greater compliance with the ordinance and our enforcement efforts. The current fines would be increased under this proposal, and also we added language so that after a third violation, the license would be referred back to the city council, which is the licensing authority for this license, for a hearing about whether or not to revoke that license. Updating and strengthening the penalties can enhance enforcement efforts, which, again, was the leading point of feedback that we've heard from the industry and from the public. There are other changes in there. We've taken the 40-person cap, which was set by order of the police chief. So the current ordinance authorizes the chief of police to set a cap on the number of participants in a tour. On October 6, 2021, the chief set that number at 40, and it's not been changed since. So what we're proposing is to just codify that in the ordinance so that there's clarity for everybody that this is the number. So that's about providing additional transparency. And lastly, the other change that I wanted to highlight is there's language in there, but there's two other changes. One of them removes the language regarding the assessment test, which has not been implemented for some time, and also language specifying that groups can't stop within 25 feet of each other, they can pass each other, but provide some clarity specifying a reasonable safe distance by which groups of 40 people can stop and still provide space for other people to get by. So in closing, you know, these changes were prompted by an effort to try to improve our ability to conduct enforcement, ensure that the costs are being borne appropriately to do so, and to ensure greater safety for the public and for the customers in guided tours. So I appreciate your taking it up, and I'll be able to stick around for a little while here, some additional comments, take questions, and then, again, I have to depart for a school committee meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. While you're here, I'd like to open it up to the council if anyone has questions for Mayor before he has to depart. Counselor Hopworth?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Mayor, could you talk through the 25-feet rule on here? I think that's gotten a lot of attention. Seems as if it would be very, very difficult to enforce and would potentially lead to disputes every single day in certain spots. So just curious if you could just talk through some of the logic behind that and why you feel it's necessary.
Yeah, so I think particularly on sidewalks of the size that we have in downtown Salem, a party of 40 people stopping is a challenge, a party of 80 people stopping within 25 feet of each other is a greater challenge. So there was an attempt to specify in our current code says you can't obstruct a sidewalk. Some of the feedback we heard was, what does that mean? How much space do we have to allow? I understand there's some questions around, like, who gets there first and who gets... I think the idea is that if enforcement personnel sees two groups stopped very close to each other, they simply ask them to move apart so that there's enough distance between them that people can reasonably navigate through.
You'd imagine that the Bewitched statue, the Witch Trials Memorial, there's certain spots that are potentially a little bit tight anyways. I just wonder how easy that's going to be to force that from that spot, but just have we talked about what enforcement would look like there, or how that would even happen? I'm just trying to understand what that...
So I think enforcement would be asking the groups to either to move further apart or to wait till another group has left the area before stopping there. The fact that it is tight really speaks to, I think, the challenge with having a six-fold increase in the number of these guides over the last 18 years impacting... You know, we have not increased the sidewalk capacity by six times as much. So I think the ability to spell out what is a reasonable distance for them to provide space for people is not a challenging thing to ask for. I don't see this as a whoever gets there first gets to stake out the ground and remain. I think the goal would be you have two groups very close to each other, it's asking the guides, can you wait or can you move apart until the next group moves on?
Thank you.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Not being a member of the committee, I'd like to follow up on Counselor Hopworth's comments on this and offer my own perspective. It's definitely something that, of course, you know, space would equal more safety, but I still see the logistical challenges and the difficulty enforcing this. When I can see multiple tours outside my window while I have my supper, I watch them pretty much every day, several groups moving around, and they... It's a little more fluid than who is stopped and who'd start. I watch them, if they're in the middle of talking, start moving their group because they see one, you know, that's trying to get through a crosswalk. I see a lot of judgment calls that they use in trying to sort that out. And also, I just see how some people in the group kind of lag or some go forward, and I watch them try to say, to start talking again, to get their attention, to move them as a group. It's just a little bit more fluid. I just see addressing something like the distance as opposed to having it spelled out like this is something that would be great to work on in, you know, the training that they have, as opposed to putting it here where it adds a layer of stress for guides that, okay, is that 25 feet instead of focusing on what's the safest way to keep a distance from the group in front of me, wrap up what I'm talking to try to get them, you know, on a safer space. I just watch them all work together, and I just feel like a better place for that to land is in the training as opposed to, you know, a guy then trying to see, is that the last one, you know, 23 feet from the other one? I just, they seem to work together quite well and need a little bit of flexibility. And also, in general, I like the idea of, you know, focusing on problem spots, and of course, I like the idea of better enforcement and, you know, and a focus on problem spots as opposed to the 25-foot, you know, being put in an ordinance in this fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Hopworth?
Thank you. I'll just add to Counselor Merkel's point. I think that we already have an ordinance that prevents the blocking of a sidewalk. I think that that seems, the police have the ability to ensure that our sidewalks are passable. I think that it's, I can imagine certain neighbors being out with measuring tape, trying to make sure that everybody's... And I just think that the police, there's no possible way the police can enforce the 25 feet. I think if we just let them know that they have the ability to enforce the current ordinances, which is that you can't block a sidewalk, and then I think there's a lot of informal relationships among the tour groups where they sort of have different spaces that they occupy, and they try to probably keep their distance as much as they possibly can. I think that's probably more reasonable than trying to put something in an ordinance that we may not be able to enforce.
If I may jump off of this topic as well, the 25 feet within another group definitely stood out to me. Was this taken from another ordinance in a different town? Or like, I understand the problem that we're trying to solve is, you know, enforcement of the, but has this been successfully used anywhere else, or are we just using it as an idea?
It did not come from another ordinance. It grew out of conversations around the kind of request for identified locations where it is appropriate to stop, and rather than, I think, identifying property or locations where there are approved stopping points, which would open up a greater series of challenges for us. The thinking was just to provide some guidance around, like, what is the physical space that is appropriate for a group to kind of leave within, to between each other? But, you know, I think the idea of folding that into the training is perfectly fine as long as everyone's participating in that briefing and understands it. To your point, Counselor Hopworth, like, this exists in the ordinance already that blocking a sidewalk isn't allowed. I think in October, it becomes really challenging to enforce that, not just with walking tours, but with the general population as well. So, but yeah, I appreciate that there is an existing code that does prohibit that, and I think the city could, you know, if it needed to, use that section of the code as an enforcement mechanism.
So to follow up on that training that we're talking about, one-time training? So if someone gets a license January 1st, 2024, '05, and they renew it every year until 2030, they wouldn't have to take that training again?
That's currently what's in the proposed ordinance. It's a one-time briefing. You wouldn't have to go every year, you would just do it one time.
Counselor Proznowski?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Not being a member of the committee, through you, to the mayor. My issue is with voice amplification, not so much in the downtown area as it is that it's now extending into several neighborhoods. I've heard concerns from several neighbors in some of the outlying neighborhoods, such as federal streets where groups are actually stopping in front of their houses, under their windows, under their bedrooms, just mere feet away from where they're residing, and they have, they're conducting their tours, you know, interrupting their quality of life. There's nothing in the ordinance about how loud this amplification is. There's no decibel level is at. I know that some of the tour companies use a very low-key amplification, which is very nice, it's very moderate, and they're very respectful for it. But I think there should be something in the ordinance about pointing out that when you're in a residential neighborhood, you don't stand up against somebody's private residence with amplification and give out the tours. And like I say, that's happening in several parts of the city outside of the downtown
Yeah, so we, I think we had made a decision to take the regulation of amplification not under consideration in this set of changes, but maybe for future discussion because it, I think, merits a larger conversation. There's, as you know, a lot of challenges around the First Amendment and our ability to limit one type of amplification versus another and try to identify where it's appropriate. We are working on some ordinance language related to sound level regulations and amplification. The one area where this ordinance, draft ordinance changes do touch on that is the idea of trying to incentivize licensees to think about not using amplification by getting a discount on the license fee. There's a lot of technologies out there that, I think, are being used in other parts of the country and other parts of the world around personal listening systems, Bluetooth systems with people's own devices that can reduce the need for amplification and increase the quality of the experience for the person on the tour. So hopefully, we can encourage the industry to move in that direction, but we anticipate being back at some point in the near future to have a longer conversation about amplification and decibel.
And maybe just as a suggestion, that during the training, maybe the ward counselors can point out specific addresses in their wards of people who have made complaints and where they should be staying away from people that are disturbed by this, and maybe the tour companies not knowing it would be kind enough to kind of stay a little bit more away from their private residence. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vrel, and Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Counselor Stott. Through you to our city solicitor, Beth Renard. Beth, in Chapter 22, relative to noise, is there any language about the limited just amplification and decibel level of just noise in general?
We do have noise regulations mostly in the downtown, not on Federal Street. Essex Street Mall and the tributaries off of the mall, there are decibel limits, but not Federal Street.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Not being a member of the committee. Yes, I also appreciate Counselor Proznowski's mention of focusing on areas that might not have as much downtown noise, so it doesn't have to be allowed, be as loud. But I also just want to make a general point about voice enhancement. I hear the tour guides in my home. I can hear them when they speak to their tours, and it's actually more pleasant to listen to a voice enhancement than someone trying to yell over their group. So I think, you know, just exploring all the options and listening to the guides, you know, what works. And another point that Counselor Proznowski made too, again, going back to the training, just having a conversation, you know, with the guys, which neighbors are quieter, and also if there's children, not having, you know, enhancement or a louder, you know, a louder volume after, you know, after 5 o'clock or something of that nature. Some of the voice enhancement systems that they have where each individual person can have a device to listen, that's difficult for outdoor tours. When I've had a lot of conversations with the guys, and if somebody's listening independently, it's hard to keep their group together because they can hear them, so they wander. One thing that keeps, helps them contain a group, this is what I was told from guides that I spoke to that had tried it, that it's harder to keep them contained with separate ones, and also people walked off with them and stuff. So there are a lot of options out there, and I think that's definitely worth a conversation on what works. But also, too, as someone, I was a guide, and it's really hard to speak through multiple, when you speak through four or five tours. And I was at the Gable, so I didn't even have downtown city noise, and I just wouldn't want to see people's livelihoods at risk, you know, when there's a device that can assist them, you know? So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Not being a member of the committee. Yeah, I mean, I think there's, you know, tour guides that play by the rules and some that don't. To Counselor Proznowski's point, in my ward, there's a little white house at the end of the street, and on a Tuesday afternoon, I counted 150 people within three houses of that house. And I have regularly in October, as Counselor Proznowski knows, I spend a lot of time in that neighborhood. We had, for the first time, instead of having barriers that said, you know, only residents can drive through the barricades, we had road closed. Typically, when you see a barricade that said road closed, you might anticipate there's a gas leak or paving or something else. And I think two years ago, we towed 270 cars. But my concern is not from the tour guides, but is from the residents of that neighborhood who regularly complained to me, and I know to Counselor Proznowski, about people ringing their doorbells, taking pictures through their windows, assuming that it's not a residential area but a studio or something. And, you know, I'm not even talking about 25 feet. I'm talking about people just congregating, blocking the road, people who live in that neighborhood not being able to go to work or school. And I think that this, you know, my concern is, number one priority, the residents of my ward who are adversely affected by, you know, people who are not considerate of the people who live in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Counselor Proznowski, then Counselor Hopworth?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Just to add to that, Counselor Cohen was talking about the Hocus Pocus House on Ocean Avenue. I think we all get that by now. I was under the understanding that there was no amplification allowed on that street during Halloween. I don't see that here in the list of streets. I'm pretty sure that that's the way it may have been written before. I think the neighborhood was under the understanding that there was no amplification. And now I see that on weekends at 11:00 PM, there can be tour guides with amplifications in a completely residential neighborhood. There are no businesses there. Those are all residents, except for that one house, which happens to be a draw because of its popularity, which is fine as long as people respect each other's rights. But if that neighborhood has to follow these guidelines, it's not going to have the, it's going to have the same quality of life as downtown, which is not right in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks. So I don't have the code in front of me, I apologize. There is a separate section about noise limits that may list that neighborhood? This section is only related to the public guides?
My understanding was that there was no amplification in that particular neighborhood. There was, I know we had talked about no amplification in all our one, in our two neighborhoods during Halloween, but that kind of got a little watered down because of the way that some of the overlays are. But that neighborhood stayed as a no-amplification zone. And it's just not that neighborhood, Mayor. You know, there's other neighborhoods that are offshoots of downtown that are also complaining.
Anyone else? Counselor Hopworth?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I think the amplification is in a separate section of the ordinances, right? This is not anything that we're looking at here tonight, I believe, but I'd have to look back at it.
Like, this is specific to public guides? It's not our noise ordinance?
Sure.
For public guides, not in generality?
I think I just wanted to, just to, I guess, be clear, at least from my perspective, is that what we're talking about here tonight is not whether tour guides are important to our economy or valuable to telling Salem's history or do a great job on our city streets. Most of what we're pointing out here today is stuff that's already illegal, stuff that's already, stuff that most of the people in this room probably do not do. And as such, I mean, even just as an example, today, I looked out onto Brown Street and saw a group of 70 congregating around the Roger Conant statue with someone using amplification. I'm certain they're not an in-town tour company. I'm certain they're not licensed. What we need is, we need enforcement. And so that's a lot of what this is dealing with right now, is not whether tour guides are valuable to our economy or whether they do a great job here. It's how do we continue to scale and grow in Halloween and not put the entire burden upon the residents and ensure that additional enforcement is paid for? And this may not be available to the public yet, but the mayor's made available just this public guide fee analysis here that just shows what this year's additional enforcement will cost us and then what the additional fees will bring into the city. So I just wanted to set that table. Thank you.
Anything else from the council for the mayor? Okay, we have lots of red lines in front of us this evening. I think we could probably go through them section by section. Because in the backup was a copy of the ordinance in full with all of the red lines. So all of the red lines are in this one document, but it is three separate orders. But I got your back, I have them written out, so we'll be good. So the first section is about application requirements, I believe the first edit, and I'm going to look for the city solicitor. Actually, if you don't mind running through them, I will probably...
I'm just going to go from the text of the amendment itself. And so what we've done in the first section with the application requirements is we've deleted the requirements for testing. That has been found to be a violation of First Amendment, and that's something we stopped doing several years ago. So that was all eliminated there. So the requirements for the application now will be for the public guide to be at least 18 years old and go through a Cory check. Teachers will be exempted, you know, when they have a class that they're bringing here for educational purposes. And then the next item, which is C, will be the effect of January 2025, would be the size of the tours will have three different tour sizes, and based on your tour size, the fee will be applicable. And then we'll have a discount for those that find a way to not use any amplification to have devices that will not amplify their voice, that will just be heard by the participants of the tour. The next amendment was that we will have different types of badges for the different-sized tours, and that, again, is January 2025. We added the prohibitions that we've talked about here, conducting tours of more than 40 people, stopping within 25 feet of another group, which sounds like we might move that to a, with training. And then we had also the safety and compliance briefing that the police department and I are working on developing. And then the other change here is relative to revocations. If somebody violates the ordinance multiple times, then they can be brought before the council for a hearing. Those are the changes to the text of Section 40-27. The other changes that we've made are proposing is to the fee schedule that is eliminating the examination fee and the application fee and replacing that with a tiered license. the examination fee and the application fee and replacing that with a tiered license, up to 10 people, $150 a year, up to 29 people, $250, up to 40 people, $350, and then the discount I mentioned earlier of $50 for the assisted devices for listening. And then we changed the noncriminal disposition of ordinance violations, which the maximum is $300 for any for any code violation. First offense, 100, second offense, 200, third offense, 300. And we always, I can refer to Mike Ball, Sergeant Ball that's here, but we generally issue warnings in advance of any any tickets that are issued, the very few tickets that are issued. So as the mayor indicated, we are working with the police department to hire additional staff for enforcement. In addition to Sergeant Ball, the chief is contemplating adding another officer to work with him during the season. So we will have more enforcement personnel out to identify those who aren't licensed or any people that are not following the guidelines.
Thank you for that rundown. I'd like to just kind of go down from the Counsel Cohen. Did you have a question?
Yes, Chair, but it's in the middle of the document.
Okay, I think if we just go from top to bottom, go through all of them, and we'll get to the middle. So the first section, the first change that was mentioned, Section 40-20, Section 27A, basically eliminates the testing. To sum up the revisions, it removes the examination fee. Any qualms or questions or concerns about that removal? I believe that's the practice now, so, okay. Moving on to the the next edit, per licenses effective January 1, 2025, this is where the tier licensure is spelled out essentially for tour groups up to 10, and then tour groups 29 to 40 participants, and then not including the guide for a fee set forth in the next section, which we'll get to. Any questions about how the tiers set up? Nope. Okay, so the next one is public guides not utilizing any form of amplification after January 1 shall be eligible for the fee discount. Any questions from the council, comments? Nope. Okay. And then just setting the effective date of January 1, 2025, and adding the badge display. Counsel Marcelo.
Thank you, Chair. This is a question, just, is there under discussion a way of color coding these badges so that you know from a distance what the size is supposed to be?
That's exactly what we're working with Sergeant Ball and the clerk on, what that will look like. We haven't designed it yet, but that's the intent, yeah.
Thank you. And also, just noting, there's a request for them to be laminated so they survive the elements.
Yes.
Okay. Any other? Counsel Watsonfeld?
Thank you. Just one comment on that as well, that we select colors that are within the colorblind accessibility best practice list. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Moving on to the prohibition sections, we've already had a few conversations around this, but essentially, we are adding three new prohibitions. The first one to stop a tour to point out or impart information if within 25 feet of another stopped tour. The next one to conduct a tour with more than 40 participants, and the third to conduct a tour without having obtained a one-time safety and compliance briefing offered by the Salem Police Department. Counsel Marcelo.
Thank you, Chair. The, the, we need to have a, what do I want to say, a pathway through to get the the license. For instance, the the training should be done before it's issued. So that should be spelled out in here, instead of making it seem like you can get your license and then sign up for the training. So that should be done before it comes to the council. And then the other question is, are number seven and number 12 redundant? What's the difference between those two?
Number seven is the one where the chief of police limits.
Yeah, we left that there in case the chief needed to make a change to the 40. I can't imagine what would happen then, but it could be a situation in the future where the chief needs to, on a particular day, Halloween or whatever it might be, the chief might need to use his authority to reduce the size.
That's fine. Then number 12 should be more specific, that the tours cannot exceed whatever you are licensed to give, not just 40, right?
Right.
My other comment is in number three, talking about crosswalks, crossing at crosswalks. I would also like to add that if the crosswalk has a crosswalk light, that should be utilized by the tour group, only because sometimes the 40-member groups take a while to cross the street, and it does hold up traffic. And if there is a crosslight available, it should be used. And then I had a question for you about the use of the sales booth. So you can only have a sales booth on public property if you have a storefront?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think that's it right now.
Anyone else on this section? Counsel Hapworth?
Not being a member of the committee, but just wondering if it's the will of the body to strike number 11? Or if we want more discussion around that?
Counsel Verella.
Thank you, Counselor Stott. Before I entertain that, are you looking for additional language for number 12 right now? Like, I've got it.
12 was to conduct, I'm sure the city solicitor can probably draft something up for that. I put add language to add specificity, including license count, right?
Yeah. I'm assuming, Beth, there would be exceeding permitted group size of 11 to 29, or permitted group size of 10 or less. I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. If I was going to make amendment, that would be it. If so, I'd like to make a motion to strike number 11 under Section 40-30 prohibitions.
Counsel Verella makes a motion to strike the red line edition number 11 to stop a tour to point out or impart information if within 25 feet of another stopped tour. I'll second that. Do you want to second that? Second it by Counselor Davis. Under discussion. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Stott. Not being a member of the committee, I want to think that the motion was made and supported as well.
Any further discussion? Okay, Counsel Verella, Counsel Watsonfeld? Okay, this is specifically for the committee on Counsel Verella's motion to strike in Section 40/30 prohibitions, number 12, no, I'm sorry, number 11, stop a tour to point out or impart information if within another 25 feet or another stopped tour, seconded by Counselor Davis. All those in favor? Any opposed? Amendment carries. Counsel Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. If there is a way we can add a, Section 40-30, no licensed public guide shall not be wearing a badge. And I guess we could amend that by making that number 11.
Can you repeat that?
So I'd like to make a motion that we add the language under Section 40-30 prohibitions, no licensed public guide shall not wear a badge. So again, the badge needs to be visible.
Is that not already in there? No? Okay. So your motion is to add a new number 11. No licensed public, it's backwards, so it's confusing me.
It might go into a requirement section.
Yeah. I feel like I saw this. I saw this somewhere else. Yeah, it's in its own section. Sorry. Okay. So in Section 40-28, contents badge of licensee, the city clerks shall issue a badge to every license holder, which sets forth the name of the person licensed. The person or license shall, at all times while engaged in the business of guide, wear conspicuously, that's why I'm not a guide, in suitable badge with the words licensed public guide and the number of the license thereon. Each employee of a licensed public guide and business owner shall also display a suitable badge that indicates the name and valid license number of said business owner and public guide. Neglected, comply with the sections will be sufficient to cause for revocation of such license. Okay, we got that covered. Okay, so strike that motion.
Yes, I'd like to strike my, yeah, remove my motion.
Okay. Counsel Watsonfeld?
Thank you, Counselor Stott. Not being a member of the committee, I do have questions about this one-time safety and compliance briefing. I think there have been so many, and there may continue to be so many small adjustments that I know that, as Counsel Hapworth said, most of the people in this room are not our biggest problems. And enforcement is going to be key to how we move forward together, but I do think it's probably worth taking a look at at a frequency of trainings. And I know that this butts up against the annual renewal cycles, because we do not renew on a specific day every year. So people can renew at the one-year mark from their date of receipt of their badge. And so mandating an annual safety session can be very, very difficult to manage for the administration, who, or the administrative staff that that manage the badges. That having been said, I would love to hear the committee, and maybe we can also take it back to council, talk a little bit further around some frequency that sort of catches all boats, right? Because there are substantive changes, and there may be substantive changes. And I think that there are some just helpful reminders, you know? There are folks in this room that have badges that like to put stickers on their badges or their or their staff does, and it affects the conspicuousness of the badge and that kind of little stuff, you know, not not bad to just revisit periodically. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, and to add on to that question, I noticed in the projected cost analysis, there was just two training sessions noted per year, which, if it's a rolling basis for licensing twice a year, and then adding that requirement prior, is tough.
So, if I may, our thought was to, once we get a couple of these under our belt, is to video them and make it available online. Work with IT to figure that out, how we can, people can log in, register, watch the video. Let me get a little more experience with it. I think that might work.
Yeah. I mean, in the corporate, I just know in the corporate world, we do a lot of those online trainings where, but there's like a quiz at the end to make sure that they were, okay, something along those lines. Any, so the current language is that the prohibition is conduct a tour without having obtained a one-time safety and compliance briefing offered by the Salem Police Department. So would there be a plan in place for the start of 2025? Like, would there be a training available the first of the year for those that have already signed up? What's, I guess, what's the plan? Is there a plan in place for this training?
So we've been meeting on that. Sergeant Ball and I are going to start meeting on it regularly so that we can put it all together. And I was expecting to have it after Halloween, so in November, December, be able to roll that out for 2025.
Counsel Watsonfeld?
Thank you. Just another thought has occurred to me, because I think that that timing makes a lot of sense from an administrative perspective. That having been said, I know we talk a lot about how do we know that everyone will have the most recent version of this if they've already been licensed for the year? What's the communication plan that there will, there have been ordinance changes specifically for our out-of-state tour guide companies? And and I just know that sometimes communication with tour guides can be a little bit tricky, and it generally falls just to our assistant city clerk, and that can be difficult.
Right. Well, Destination Salem has been at the table. We've been discussing this for the last year, and they have connections with the tour bus companies for the most part. So we're planning on using their resources, their connections, to get the word out.
Thank you, Chair. And obviously, this can be emailed to anyone who's got an email on on record with the with the office downstairs. Okay, great. Thanks.
Just to circle back on this conversation, too, with the, I think the term re-upping was used, or refreshing, but we're just saying a one-time license. So is is there a plan that, for someone that keeps renewing their license every year, to be sending them this training? Like, it sounds like there is, but that's not at all what's written in front of us.
Right. It's something that's evolving. We've just started meeting on the training, so it's not something we have finalized at this point. But we have, we have a regular group that meets on a monthly basis, and that's one of our agenda items that we've been working on.
Could you fairly say that the expectation is that, like, a refresher training would be provided annually?
So what we do with LICA license, we can, is we, on an annual basis, when they are renewed, and I'd love to see this rule, I have to talk, work with the city clerk on this, but get this done, like we do LICA licenses for the beginning of January. And then every year, if there's a change, we send out the guidance on that with the application. So that could be something, I just have to work with the clerk on the timing of that, what works for her schedule.
And just from my own knowledge, is the Corey only completed once? Or is it completed at reapplication every year?
It's every year.
Okay. Counsel Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I mean, seeing that, just in the discussion of Section 13, seeing that this is going to be online, and I know that the policies will be changing with these, this new ordinance we have as well. I think that an annual compliance briefing and safety training is reasonable, and it will update everyone on the matters. So with that, I'd like to make a motion for Section 40-30 prohibition, Section 13, conduct a tour without having obtained a striking one time, and adding annual safety and compliance briefing offered by the Salem Police Department.
Counsel Verella makes a motion to edit number 13 in Section 40-30 to strike one time and rephrase it annual. I'll second that just for discussion. Could I maybe offer up that that might belong in the application section?
Yes.
I'm thinking, because the Corey, each application, each applicant who applies for a public guide license. Chair. Submit to a clear criminal background check. Counsel Watsonfeld?
Thank you, Chair. Just another suggestion, not being a member of the committee, that that it may require some language in this year, given 2024 is already well underway, that the annual requirement may begin 2025. Or I would look to the city solicitor on that, just only because there are many, many people who already have their licenses for the year. And so I'm just not sure how you want to handle that legally.
Yes, if we could either make the whole edits in its totality effective January 1, or are we just saying certain, the fees are effective January 1? I guess right now, as it's written, it's just the fees are effective January 1.
Right.
So I guess perhaps a new E in Section 40-27 for licenses effective January 1, 2025 and thereafter, public guide applicants also obtain an annual one-time safety and compliance, something like that? Counsel Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Just just for clarification, what we're looking to do at this point, or what's suggested, is removing Section 13 from 40-30 prohibitions and adding it to 40-27?
Well, I think it actually could belong in both places. Because it's a prohibition, they can't conduct the tour until they complete that. Because you can apply for your license and have it granted, but you can't until you.
Exactly.
No? Can, city solicitor, do you have any feedback on these edits?
So we weren't planning on having the annual safety training be a requirement until any licenses issued after 2024. So I think I would add where the application requirements are effective 2025, the applicants must, I'll have to add something in there, because we wanted to get it done in in November, December, for January. So I'll wordsmith this a little bit and propose it for the next meeting, if that's okay with you.
Sure, yeah. We would also probably have to edit 13 as well, because if that's not, we don't want to put that into effect before October. Counsel Harvey?
I agree with the, you know, the updated safety or training, but does it really have to be annually? to be annually? I mean, real estate licenses are every three years, electricians' licenses are every three years. I mean, if they get their license and they have to renew it every year, but I don't feel if there's not many changes within what they did when they first got their license, why would we have to make them do this course every year? I mean, it may be biannual or every three years if they...
Could we ask if you could maybe provide some context of what might be included in this training to help us with the...
Yeah, so the things we've been talking about is reviewing the ordinance, number one. Number two, safety issues with respect to traffic and parking and using the crosswalks and what to do if somebody falls, how to file a complaint, who to call, how do you get the ambulance there quicker, things for the safety of the customers, those types of things, what we have on the list of things for training. What else do we talk about? Yeah, we have a few other things, but mostly the safety of the customers and how to keep people safe and what to do if there's an accident.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Cohen, Counselor Varela, then Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Chair Stott. So as a council, we get these fairly regular, you know, security videos that we're required to watch, and we have to go to the whole end of it and press finished, and it does register with the company. And I know you and other people who work in the IT field know that that's possible. So anticipating that there may be changes to what the training is because of different safety things or whatever every year, I think that once the video is established, it will change as things change, as we need them to. And all we're requiring people to do by watching the video is to watch the whole video and then press whatever they have to press at the end. And I think that would resolve the frequency issue. Then it could just be whenever we do it. And if there's some, you know, urgency to it, we could send out an email and say, please watch the new training.
Counselor Westenfeld and Counselor Davis. Did I get that today? I'm sorry.
Apologies, I jumped the line. I just wanted to make one additional comment on to what Counselor Cohen just said, and I think it's important to reiterate that there are a number of tour guides in this company, in this town, that are not members of our community. And they have very little stake in how they show up and how they care for their customers who are also often not members of our community. And I think an annual, like, you know, to Counselor Cohen's point, with such a low barrier to engagement, for the most part, I think it would make a lot of sense, at least for the, you know, as we move forward with this new manner of training, that we give it, we make it annual for the, at least the foreseeable future, and we can always revisit.
Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Since we do have a lot of, for the sake of time, and I know that our solicitor here is gonna be wordsmithing the language, and there is a motion on the floor, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the, Counselor Davis, did you have a comment? Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Just very quickly, since it's going to be conveniently online, I want to support annual as well. I think it's a good idea. I always welcome refresher courses on safety, and it's always helpful to review when things do change. And I think it would be easier to keep track of, you renew annually and review the training annually, as opposed to looking up, you know, was it two years ago? Was it three years ago? I think it's convenient enough that it's reasonable to ask to be done every year.
Thank you. So I think the takeaway here on this training item is that there will be some amended language presented for the two pieces, the prohibition and the requirement. I'd like to bring up one other item. I don't know if we wanted to have an amendment offered for Number Three about preference crossing at a light. I do agree with that one. And I don't know how the rest of the committee feels about those comments. If anybody's in support of them, they can make a motion. Counselor Davis?
So moved? Or do I have to make language? All right. I move that in Section 40-30 prohibitions, Number Three, we add language. I might need help here, I'm sorry.
Sure. So I think we could just probably add, after crosswalk, and we would ask for the city solicitor to help with this, that the...
Crosswalk lights be activated.
Preference at one with an activated crosswalk light. Thank you. I will second that. Any comments from the committee on Counselor David's motion to add language to Section 40-30 prohibitions, Number Three, to add preference of crossing at a crosswalk with an activated light? All those in favor? Any opposed? Amendment carries? Thank you. Any other comments on this prohibition section? Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, Chair. Just a question for Ms. Renard. It talks about conducting a tour on the grounds of 33 Proctor Street, Number 10. Does that include, I mean, I don't want to get too specific here, but does that include the sidewalks in the street?
No.
No. It doesn't?
No. The property itself, not the public sidewalk.
So you can't be on the grounds of the memorial, but you can be right in front of it on the sidewalk?
Sidewalk, yeah. That's the way.
Sajavall, I don't know if we've had any issues there.
Okay. I mean, okay, well, I've gotten complaints from the people that live right across the street from it, because they, their idea, or they were under the impression that tours cannot go there at all.
That's not the way it was drafted. We could, I could look at that, we could talk to the PD about it and get some more feedback on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Westenfeld?
Thank you, Chair. I think, just wanted to draw attention that this was the section, I believe, that Counselor Presnisky was referring to earlier, where the utilization of voice amplification is prohibited on certain streets. And I just wanted to make the note that Ocean Ave is not included here. So if that was the question, he is correct.
Any further comments on the prohibition section? Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Not being a member of the committee, I'm hoping someone who is on the committee could add Ocean Ave.
Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Counselor Stott. I would like to make a motion under Section 4030, Section Eight, that Ocean Ave be added to the list of streets as well.
Counselor... Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Harvey. Under discussion? Counselor Presnisky?
Thank you. Ocean Ave is a pretty big street. I don't think we want the people down by Canal Street being scratching their head saying, I think we can just put the block, maybe the lower end between Summit Avenue and Shore Avenue, because that's where the road is blocked during the season. And I also, Ocean Avenue wasn't just exclusive, there are other neighborhoods that are being affected. So I'm hoping that there would be, this would be open-ended, and we can get some more information from some of the ward councils if they have properties that may also want to be included.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I just wanted to clarify that Number Eight is for prohibiting the utilization of voice amplification. It's Number 10 that says it prohibits conducting a tour on those grounds. So I'm not clear on what the motion is for Ocean Ave. I'm not offering an opinion, I was just confused because...
Sure, we'll get clarification on the motion. So was your motion, did you say Number 10? But mean Number Eight?
Number Eight.
Okay. So Counselor Varela's amended motion is to amend Section 40-30 prohibitions, Number Eight, to add Ocean Ave, seconded by Counsel Harvey, and requesting a friendly amendment by Counsel Presnisky to include the specific block of Ocean Ave. Do you know the numbers of the cross streets? Summit Ave to Shore Ave. You accept that?
Yeah, I'd second that amendment.
Okay. Are there, are there any amplifications, this question's for the city solicitor, for us to adding additional streets? Like, I don't know the history of the streets that were included on here, why these specific streets are there, and how we can, how we can even have these streets on there. I don't, I don't get that.
So my memory is that these streets were added over time based on complaints by residents of folks giving tours outside their kids' bedroom windows and such. And that's how that evolved. I can tell you that that is, Howard Street was one where there were complaints about people standing, you know, outside their dining room windows. And I can't speak to the other streets. I can tell you Howard and Brown, I was involved in those discussions.
Okay. Sounds a little bit like resident parking. Counselor Presnisky?
Thank you. I've also heard complaints from tour groups that are going down Federal Street through the McIntyre District. So, and I'm sure that's not the only ones, so...
Can of worms. Counselor Westenfeld?
Thank you, sorry, thank you, Chair Stott. Not being a member of the committee, yes, we could add a lot of streets to this list, for sure. But just legally speaking, as I understand it, City Solicitor Renard, if we were to ban amplification on these certain streets, that means all amplification, which means that there are no block parties with amplification, there is no amplified music of any kind, there's no close the street down and have a summer party. So just for the public listening in, Counsel Hapworth is not allowed to have a block party on Howard Street. But in all seriousness, it does, it is absolutely a slippery slope. I have had numerous complaints, numerous complaints, as the Ward Two City Councilor, on the blocks of the McIntyre District, specifically Chestnut, Federal, and parts of Essex, around the Ropes Mansion specifically as well. And unfortunately, I have been hesitant to add those streets to this ordinance prohibiting amplification, because it does impact all residents as well. We cannot, we cannot specify the use of amplification for some kinds of speech and not others. Believe me, I have gone down this road many, many, many times. So I just wanted to say that out loud, so that everyone fully understood the implications legally of adding streets to this very, very slippery section of the prohibitions. Thanks.
Thanks. Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I also want to agree with Counselor Watson felt on this. It's, and when you say, well, that's a residential street, there are plenty of residential streets sprinkled in the downtown. What constitutes a residential street? If part of it is residential, like mine, and then all of a sudden it's not, I think that gets very murky. And I also, yeah, wouldn't want to put it out there that whoever's complaining the most is going to get on here. I mean, there's, there's just a lot, a lot of, there's a lot of residents downtown, too. And yeah, we hear all kinds of feedback, so I just want to agree with Counselor Watson felt on that.
Counselor Cohen, then Counselor Westenfeld, and then we'll go to a vote.
Thank you, Chair Stott. Not being a member of the committee, I, I do believe that the section of, you know, Ocean Ave is different, because it's, as Counsel Presnisky said, it's not commercial, it's near the park, people want to do amplification, they can figure that out. There has just been, you know, probably a quarter of that block has been consumed by hundreds of people at a time. And I'm just saying, like, I'm hoping the committee will just add that block, because we've already decided as a city, especially the public safety people, to actually prohibit people from driving down that street if you don't live on that street. So there's obviously something about that block that is particular. And I can't address the other places, because they're outside of my ward, but we don't prohibit people from going down Federal Street or Brown Street or any other street, but we do prohibit them during that month for going down that section of Ocean Ave. And we even block off the cross streets, like Cliff Street and the end of Shore. And I have sat there and had a minivan from North Carolina come in, full of people, and I've said, do you live on the street? And they're like, yeah. And I'm like, what are you doing here? Obviously, you don't. So it's a particular problem at the end of that block, and all you have to do, if you want to come down and have a cup of coffee with me and Counsel Presnisky, you will watch what happens at the end of that street.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I want to support Counselor Cohen on what he said. It is a unique situation there that needs to be addressed.
Any for Counsel Westenfeld?
Sorry, thank you, Chair, not being a member of the committee. The last thing I'll say about this, though, is that I would absolutely welcome the opportunity to further discuss or have the committee's opinion on limiting amplification after certain periods of time on certain streets, not periods of time, certain times of the day on certain streets. You know, to Counsel Presnisky's point, I think what I have often talked about with the city solicitor and the mayor himself is also that there is a general din in the downtown, which does not exist outside the immediate downtown. And so amplification with that din is a very different experience as you walk by or live in an apartment or condo than it is if you're living on a relatively otherwise very quiet street after, you know, 5:00, 5:30 at night or whatever. And then there's no din to kind of offset the impact of amplification. So amplification just like really pops in some of those more, more sort of quieter side streets. So, you know, maybe nothing to do about that tonight, but wanted to just close out this part of the conversation by saying would welcome the opportunity to talk through that, welcome to hear from city solicitor on the legality of that level of sort of regulation, and that's all. Thanks.
Okay. I'll note that once the council is finished with their review of the red lines, I will move it to public comment. I just wanted to make that comment. So we have in front of us a motion to add to Section 40-30, Number Eight, to add at the end of that, an Ocean Ave from Summit to Shore? Is that correct? Okay, so that was made by Counsel Varela, seconded by Counsel Harvey. Any other comment, questions from the committee? So for the committee, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries? So any other items on the red lines in prohibition section? No? Okay. So any comments or questions on Number Four of the amendments that we have in front of us, which is Section 40-31, revocation penalty? Counselor Cohen?
This is the middle of the ordinance that I wanted to address.
We got there in an hour.
Chair Stott, take a little longer than I expected. I did not forget what I wanted to say. So through you, to Sajavall, and Solicitor Renard, assuming, if you could just clarify this, that this would be a similar hearing that we do when, you know, a livery or taxi is before us? And if it is, just so the public knows, that would ensure the privacy of the people who are before the council for the hearing.
So it could be at the option of the person who's being brought before the council to go into executive session or to have it in open session, which the taxi operators have now. They have that ability to request that it be an open session.
Okay. It's, so currently, as Counsel Cohen was alluding to, we have a similar process with our livery licenses, that they can, if it, if a license is denied, they can challenge that with the council, and while a committee meeting is held, they're generally in executive session, which means behind closed doors until the matter is resolved or a decision is made. But that is up to the applicant. They're generally always in there. Counselor Westenfeld, do you have a question?
Thank you, Chair, not being a member of the committee, through you to the city solicitor. I do have a question about this edit. So the way that this is written indicates that people who receive their third violation are still allowed to conduct business as usual until the hearing takes place and a judgment is made?
Unless there's some criminal activity that would prevent them from continuing.
Okay. So it could be a matter of, so violators could be allowed to continue to conduct business as usual for a manner of potentially three weeks at a minimum?
Yeah. It would be fact-specific, and it could be something that was far more egregious than, you know, just blocking a sidewalk. than, you know, just blocking a sidewalk.
Sure. Okay. Just wanted to, yeah, so is there, so is there some level of judgment then on the part of the, of Sergeant Ball and his team that they could say, you're sort of out of here for now, regardless of what the outcome of the, the final council hearing is?
Right. And, and request a hearing, an immediate hearing.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying.
And the current process, just from my clarification, is none. Like, they can just continue, correct? There's no hearing? Okay. There's no removal of license? Okay. Any further comments or questions? Okay. Went through that section fast. So now we, the last two sections kind of go hand in hand. There's first the penalties, or at least on the red lines. So might do that one first. That might be kind of a quicker conversation. So the first offense is being changed from 25 to 100. Second is being changed from 50 to 200. And the third is being changed from 100, third and subsequent, from 100 to 300. And we're also adding additional enforcement persons, including fire, health, and building officials. So that allows just more inspectors, not necessarily having to be a member of the police department or a licensing inspector, they could also be a member of fire, health, or building officials. Also note that the 300 is the max that we can find by ordinance. And I will also note that earlier was mentioned that a warning is usually issued first. Any comments from the committee or council? Okay, so moving on to fees. Chapter 14, Section 38 fees. So changing that this is a public guide examination fee to this is a public guide annual fee. 2024, the fees will continue to be $10 for new applicant, $20 for late renewal. And I'm just noting that the fees are calendar year. So all licenses start on January 1st and end, or all licenses end December 31st, notwithstanding when they're started. Okay. 2025 and thereafter, the license fees will go into a tier schedule of permanent group size 10 or less, total fee 150 for the year, permanent group size, permitted group size, 11 to 29, 250, permitted group size of 30 to 40, 350. And those groups can get a non-amplification discount of $50, removing the one-time examination fee and the reexamination fee and subsequent reexamination fees. And we still have the query check fee of $25. Any comments from the committee? I will note that provided earlier today from the city solicitor, some fee analysis of how those fees came to be. And if you wouldn't mind Solicitor Renaud walking us through, some of it is estimates, because we would have to estimate how many, not just how many licenses we would get, because we kind of have an idea of how many we have now, but what tiers they would purchase. And then we're pretty solid on what the projected costs are. So if you don't mind walking through.
So the projected costs include the city clerk staff, the estimated 4.75 hours per applicant, which includes sending renewal notices, maintaining the spreadsheet, preparing the applications for the council, creating the badges, doing the query checks, doing the mailings, answering a lot of phone calls about licensure and complaints from either residents or from tour guides themselves. So then we have that from the city clerk's office. We also have the new part-time position that is in the budget. And then we have the police department enforcement, which will be enhanced this, this coming year. And in addition to that, the trainings. The final thing that we have on the list is the equipment for the badges, the envelopes, the postage, with a total projected expense going forward of $62,000. And the revenue, I, I estimated that of the 175 licenses that we have right now, we estimated that 75% of them will do the full cost license, the, up to 40 for the 350. And then a smaller portion, 25% of those, may take advantage of the no amplification. So I didn't factor in the revenue being anyone that would have a tour less than 40. So I maxed that out for the projected revenue. So the projected revenue was $59,000, estimated expenses over 62.
Could you tell me how you got to that training estimated expense of 1,000? That just seems really low to me.
It is low. I just estimated that based on the number of hours that I thought would, we would need to do at least one training to put online. And I took Sergeant Ball's salary and multiplied it by that, by the eight hours.
Okay. But no consideration of like what the software might cost to utilize?
No, I didn't. That, that will have to be added here, but I didn't, had no idea what that would cost, so.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the council or committee? Nothing? Okay. Counselor Merkel?
Thank you. I do know, were you asking just your committee members?
Oh, not the council.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you, Chair Stott, not being a member of the committee. And I appreciate getting more information on, you know, the fee analysis. I do appreciate having this explanation and a clearer picture of what the intent is here. And I certainly understand it. We need, you know, better enforcement and a process in the training. And that, of course, all costs money. And I agree, the fee needs to go up. $10 is really low. I'm just not comfortable with the amount. As, as the mayor pointed out, increases, you know, for best financial practice, need to be done incrementally. And I, to see it just all of a sudden, for years, it's, it's not looked at, or conversations have gotten stuck, stuck in the weeds. And then, you know, the people of this industry, all of a sudden, it's this incredibly large increase. So I, like I said, I do appreciate a clear picture of where the funds are going. I just, yeah, I'm not comfortable with that all at once. That's, that's a, that's a real, really steep increase. And a lot of tickets have been sold, and January is not that far away. So yeah, just, just want to put that out there.
Anyone else? Counselor Watsonfeld?
Thank you, President Stott. I can understand that Counselor Merkel's discomfort. I think that it's, it is a relatively large jump. It's been 18 years since this fee structure has been looked at, which is our fault, for sure. That having been said, you know, this is not the kind of industry, in my mind, and from my observation, and from crunching my own numbers, that, that could not absorb an additional 250 per ticket between now and December 31st of 2024. This is an industry that is not local customer-based. Predominantly, it is demand by tourism, tourism industries nationwide, globally. You know, add service fees, additional fees, fees for municipalities. We actually do have examples of that. There's also surge pricing in October. I think, you know, many of the tour companies that, that host tours in October have a different fee structure for that month than they do between January and, and September. I, I think that this math can work if, if it were adopted as an incremental increase in ticket pricing pushed through to the, to the customer, which though may be bad business in a regular economy and small business, I think with the tourism industry, we've seen it time and time again. We see it with Disney, we see it in major cities like Manhattan, we see it in New Orleans, we see it all over the world. So I, I'm, though I understand the position, I am also confused by the fact that there's so much pushback when this is, you know, a relatively lucrative business. I think we all know that. So I just, I, you know, I'm less on, I would feel very, very different about this if we were changing these fees for like, you know, the convenience store that's, you know, owned by a member of the neighborhood down the street. I would feel very differently about that. That having been said, in this economy, we are all experiencing a relatively high surge in pricing in our everyday goods. We all know that. Inflation has this effect on us this year and the last number of years and years ahead. I, so I struggle with the resistance to figuring out how to make this work on a per-ticket price. Thanks.
Counselor Cohen, then Counselor Varela.
Thank you, Chair Stott, not being a member of the committee. We know whether there's merit or not, that all increased costs are passed on to the customer. We know that there's many companies that actually inflate the cost with the excuse of inflation. Having said that, my concern is actually about the variety of public testimony I've received in emails and personal interactions with guides, many I would consider friends of mine. And I'll express my confusion. When Counselor McLean and I were, spent over a year on the wage theft ordinance, one of the key things that we wrote into the ordinance was about classification. Classification is one of the ways that employees are screwed the most. And a lot of tour guides have expressed in emails to us or in person that this is affecting their personal livelihood. And it's my belief that the legal classification, the way the laws are in Massachusetts, is that these fees should be assumed by the employer. And if they're not, that's misclassifying the, the worker. Okay? And so the question I would have for tour companies is, because if you're just a, a guide that has your own company, it's one thing. But if you have, you know, a lot of tour guides that work for you, that's a different kind of a situation. Because if you're by yourself, or, you know, a very small group, you're assuming more of that cost. But the question I have is, because I'm very confused about a lot of the, you know, what people have expressed to me, and in many cases, they're to the full council, is who's assuming the cost? I'm really worried about that because wage theft has become a multi-billion dollar industry in Massachusetts. We have a lot of industries in this city that have expressed by their employees in Salem, everywhere. But I can only speak for people who have contacted me. And we know that the federal government and the, and the state attorney general have come down on businesses in Salem for, for wage theft. And I want to make sure that this classification issue is really addressed because it's my belief that the fee should be the burden of the company and not the worker. Thank you.
Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Yeah, this is the big elephant in the room is these fees. Unfortunately, the fees haven't been updated in 18 years. And now we kind of have to rip off the Band-Aid. To everyone here, as we all know, doing business in any city, especially the city of Salem, it's a privilege, not a right. We have many businesses that pay licensing fees. Right now, we're currently looking at other licensing fees right now to bring those up to date. So I understand, you know, this is a cost of doing business here. And, you know, it really comes down to, you know, it's, it's the impact to the residents here. And we really need to be mindful of how much it costs for enforcement and how to be mindful of everyone here. And obviously, we, we need more enforcement. So I think the fees are justified because we need to be on top of this. It's not only about, it's about everybody. It's also about the tour guides that don't play by the rules. And I think that's why we really need to take this seriously. So thank you, guys.
Counselor Harvey, then Counselor Watsonfeld?
I do agree with Counselor Merkel, as I would like to see it go up in increments. But I also want to make sure, and this, from these fees refers back to the offenses, are they offenses to the guide, or are they to the owner of the company? Because you take an instance where, you know, there's a group of 20 people. And then somebody says, oh, like, you know, these, these two people are in our group. Now, the owner of the company says, all right, take those 22. So now that guide's forcefully being told to do something wrong. And they're probably going to feel that if they don't do it, they're not going to have a job. So they're going to take those extra two people. Now they got caught. So I honestly think that if there's a fine for the guide for doing it, there should be some sort of look into why they did it. And if it was the company that forced them to do it, then that company should be fined as well as the guide, in my opinion. But that goes back to the fees. I think that the fees, you know, it's, the company could sit there and say, okay, well, these fees have gone up. We need to try to recoup some of these fees if we're the ones that are paying them. So they're going to try to sneak little things in, like any big company does, to try to stretch the envelope a little bit, per se. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, President Stott. Well, sorry, that was last year. Counselor Chair Stott, not being a member of the committee. I think Counselor Cohen's point is an extremely important one. And I, I think it's also important then to say, as I understand it, the majority of the guy, and maybe it's not the majority, I'm looking at the path to tell me if I'm right or wrong. Many of the guides in Salem are, are independent contractors and are not actually on W2s for their tour company-owned, like, group. Is that correct?
I don't have any data on that.
It would be interesting to look into that because I think the multiple points being made here, I know a number of tour guides who are self-employed, right, that there's that. I know that each guide has to be individually licensed, right, because they are individually conducting tours. But then they are often hired on by larger companies. That having been said, who pays the fees, I think, varies widely across the companies and how they're organized. That having been said, I, I don't know that we can, you know, there's no mandate there. Like, if they're independent contractors and that's the structure of their business, then, and they're outside the W2 structure, then that falls to the individual, the individual contributor. I don't know that we can, like, regulate around that because there's just too many business models. But I, I just wanted to validate, what I, what I hear is, is valid. But I think that there's no way to, to control it except through, you know, the wage theft ordinance that we have in place.
Counselor Harvey, then Counselor Varela.
Just a question. Was there any thought into separate fees, whether they were in-state or actual businesses in the city of Salem compared to out-of-state tour guides? Like, I know a lot of places you go, if you're a community member, you have a discounted fee compared to somebody that comes in from out of state and just comes in here to grab the buck and then leave. Whereas these local tour guides are here year-round. You know, I mean, I've seen them out in the winter, walking people around at Christmas time when they have their Chestnut Street lights and stuff like that. So I, I would like to see some structure as to, for an out-of-state license in comparison to a, or out-of-community license in comparison to a license that's within our community.
I'm going to lean to City Solicitor Renaud, but I'm going to assume that the legalities of that have a
So that's a commerce clause issue. I'll take a look at that. But typically, license fees for running a business, you can't differentiate based on where you live. It's interstate commerce. So take a look at it, though.
Also, to a few of these points that have been made, it does say that the public guide, who's an employee of a business owner, must possess a badge that identifies the public guide as an employee of that license. Like, so are we not tracking any of that information? Like, who?
I'll have to check with the clerk. I'm sure she is. I just don't know.
Okay. Counselor Watsonfeld?
We do, but they move around quite frequently. It's, and it's not uncommon. And there's no restriction on the number of guides each company can own, like there is when we have, say, like, our, our psychic licenses, our, what is the word?
Fortune?
Thank you. Fortune teller license, yeah. Fortune teller license has a certain number of, you know, maximum licenses per commercial space. But because tour guides don't often have, or, or we do not require them to have commercial property in town, we don't restrict the number of licenses per company. So a company could be completely virtual, right? And that's, that's, we don't get into like that.
And one guide can work for more.
And one guide can work for whomever. Yeah, it's like hairdressers, right? Like, you could be affiliated with, with a studio, but you're also an independent licensed person who can be working for multiple companies. So though we track it, it's not uncommon to hear Maureen talk about having to reissue badges relatively frequently because folks move around.
Educational night. Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I'll just add, in support of my colleagues on this, that the biggest threat, I think, to this industry right now is not potentially, you know, 40-cent service charge or any regulations that we're talking about here tonight. 40 cent service charge, or any regulations that we're talking about here tonight. I think the biggest threat to a lot of businesses in Salem is unsustainable growth in October, and throughout the rest of the year. We, as a community, are very, very dangerously close to spending more than we take in, in October, as we know. And even if you look at this breakout here that Beth put together, super-conservative, as she, I think, even sort of alluded to, it's going to require more than this. And it even comes in under the estimation. But I would assume that that estimation could have been made even much higher, on the higher end there. So I think that the, what we need to continue to do as a community is we need to continue to look for ways to make October sustainable. And to, you know, a detriment to this industry is a city that can't afford to maintain its cemeteries and sidewalks, and police forces. That is, to me, is a bigger threat to this business model than to anything we're talking about here tonight. So I do support these fees, and just appreciate the work that's gone into this.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Stott. Not being a member of the committee, I want to be clear about what I said before. When we presented the wage theft ordinance to the council, we had the overwhelming support of the business community, the Chamber and other, you know, North Shore Latino Business Association, Latino Leadership Coalition, North Shore Labor Council. But the business community specifically, because the concept is that if you're a business that plays by the rules, you are being screwed by all the businesses that don't. And if you are misclassifying your workers, and another company is classifying them as employees, they are paying, you know, workman's comp, and they're paying social security, and they're paying all sorts of stuff. It's not just the dollars that you put out. So I'm not addressing anything other than, since the wage theft ordinance was passed, a lot of people have come to me, you know, there's a restaurant that has potentially violated it. We know of the ones that have already been fined, or penalized in some way. But I've had an unusual amount of tour guides come to me who work in that industry, who have been victimized, at least according to them. And so, I'm not addressing the total amount of the fee. I'm just addressing this thing that not all tour guides are the same. Not all tour guide companies are the same. I said to one of my friends in the room here, is your tour guide company better than everyone else? Because there's this concept that everyone is acting like they're all the same. And the reason that we have enforcement is because not every company is playing by the rules. And I just wanted to enforce that it's not just whether you're blocking a sidewalk, it's are you treating the people that work for you appropriately? If you're not, you're being screwed by your competitor. And I'm just bringing that up, because a lot of my concern is, just in general, is to make sure that workers who should be considered employees are. Thank you.
Anything from the committee? Before I move over to public comment? Okay. We do have some time for public comment this evening. If you're here in the room and would like to make public comment, please make your way to the microphone. If you'd like to state your name and address for the record, you can do that, and I will record that. And you can make your public comment.
Okay. Indoor voice, I'm not giving...
Speaking of amplification.
Okay. Hi, Jeffrey Lilly, 265 Lafayette Street. A couple of quick things. Obviously, the last meeting was contentious. So appreciate a lot of the emails, a lot of conversations, I think, between all the business owners and tour guides. We've moved in a healthy direction at this point. Just a couple of quick things that I noted. When it comes to enforcement, I think I can speak for probably most of my fellow tour guides, we see little to none. I can mark tour guides out there breaking rules almost every day. And when you say that you're going to enforce, sure, fine. But there's very little record of past enforcement. So to say that we need these funds to do something that you haven't done yet, makes us all a little concerned. In October, obviously, it gets remarkably worse. I've seen tour guides taking their whole group straight down the trees, roads, flicking off cars, screaming at people. And I'm like, there's, all it would take is just a small amount, and then we could compare and see. I'm not saying that there aren't officers out there. I know there are. I know the job is overwhelming. But to sort of hit us with massive enforcement, when there's been little in the past, feels a little weird. The safety class, 100% for personally, I think that's a great idea. As we noted, how often that could happen, maybe a Zoom option for people who aren't in town, or don't have that time on their schedule to make it down the police station, whatever that case may be, might also be an additional option. One thing with group size, and getting tickets for that. Sometimes, as you mentioned, the tour owner tax on another two people, and then that person's getting a ticket. Sometimes that's totally out of our control, even as owners. Last year, I had a massive issue with TripAdvisor Inviter, putting people in the wrong booking sections. I had one thing, they were coming up with tickets saying an entirely another time. Happened throughout the entire month of October. One time, I had a tour booked, 40 people, I had a group of eight come up, and be like, oh yeah, here's our ticket for this time. I had them on a totally different time. Sure, jump on the tour. I couldn't turn them away. And these things happen regularly, and sometimes at absolutely no fault of the tour guide or the tour owner. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but it is something that we have to deal with. Even when we try to play by the rules, even when our best intent is to follow all the rules, we're dealing with tourists in the hundreds of thousands, in booking software, in phone calls, in canceled calls, and people turning up late. I've had people just turn up and be like, oh, no, we thought we'd just take the 9 o'clock instead of the 7 o'clock. And you're like, appreciate you. Thanks for coming to Salem. And it gets difficult, and it gets stressful. And while enforcement is necessary, I don't know what the leeway could, should, or possibly be. But at the same time, sometimes these things aren't even within our control. And lastly, when it comes to the revenue, I understand, we need it. We can do better. We can meet in a conversation in the middle when it comes to that. But if we could stop saying to just add it to a ticket price, I think we'd all appreciate that, because that's not something we can legally do. We cannot have a ticket tax in Massachusetts. We want to get together and go to the State House and change the law, I'm here for it. If you want us to pay a fee, fine. But to just say that it is added onto a ticket price, we cannot legally do that. That's not where it's coming from. Obviously, it's coming from the revenue, but we can't just put in a 10%, 50%, 50 cent, whatever the case may be. We can't legally do that. So if we could leave that out of the conversation from now on, I know me and a lot of my other business employees would appreciate that. Other than that, thank you all. Genuinely appreciate the middle ground we've come to tonight. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm talking tonight. Hi, my name is Beth Crowley, and my address, correct? 100 Federal Street. So, thank you for allowing me the time to speak publicly. Didn't plan on it, was a little nervous. So I live here in Salem, I'm a resident. I love Salem, love seeing everyone out. And we love sharing our passion of the city with our guests. I own Witch City Walking Tours, which probably is one of the larger companies that is locally owned by a public school educator. So I've been hearing a lot of talk about these big companies, and one quote or whatnot was pushing, stretching the envelope. I can tell you that I live my life every day, that we follow the rules, and that we are a class act. We don't get involved in drama, we try not to. We get along with the other companies. We want to see other companies do well. We want to also treat the residents with respect. I'm a resident of Federal Street, so I don't often hear tours on Federal Streets. That's strange. But we've worked really hard. This is our 10th anniversary. I still work in Chelsea. I go to school all day long, and then I come home and I do my second job. I employ 34 people. These are residents of Salem. They are not fly-by-night people. They are licensed. I pay the licensing fees. It is almost impossible to legally have someone on a 1099. I pay workers' comp, liability insurance, which is over $30,000. So these are big increases, and I do agree that an increase needs to be made. It was a little bit of sticker shock, going from 10 to 350, because I pay that. These are my employees. I'm a little confused about the tour sizes, because we are open in January. Last year, I lost probably 20,000, keeping my employees working, which I'm happy to do that. So, am I paying for little tours in January, and the large tours in October? I don't know how this fee structure works. We really respect the residents. We do not use amplification in the McIntyre District or on Ocean Ave. But we understand that tourism is the lifeblood of Salem. I recently became a board member of Destination Salem, and I'm really excited to see where Salem moves forward in the future. We provide structured, educational, engaging activities for our guests, who we love. Without the tour companies, people would come here, there'd be nothing to do, and like, a lot of chaos. So again, I keep my company opening around. I'm definitely a little nervous about the increase. I'll figure it out. I pay for it. But it's really important to know that we are not some conglomerate from out of state. I started this as a student teacher at Salt and Stall. So, I think that's it. I just want to thank you for listening, and thank you for all of your work, and for working together with us.
Thanks, Beth. Could you, this is not necessarily a question and answer, but you did have one question in there about the tour guide fee, like, the 40 limit to your structure? Were you asking if that was an annual in January versus...
I was just a bit confused, because we have 40 people, and I sent in all my percentages to, I was emailed about it, and, you know, January, 0%. We are lucky if I have two people, but I'll still pay my tour guide. And I lose a lot of money, and it's okay, because it will even out. But it's not really fair, like, I'm paying for 40 all year long, but in January, I only have two people on a tour. So I was trying to figure out how that's going to work.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was any, Thomas Merkel. There are many problems with this ordinance, as has been addressed. Like, for example, employees. Doesn't matter if you're a 1099 or an employee, you are not the one who sets the number of your tour. It is your employer. And plain and simple, I can tell you, if you say, no, I'm not taking those extra five, they don't give you another tour. And it's as simple as that. The responsibility belongs with the employer for all fines and punishments. So it shouldn't be a three-strike rule for the guy who's following orders. It should be a three-strike rule for the person giving it. And the very simple solution to that is, several companies keep a backup guide, for just the problem of TripAdvisor screwed up. Here we go. These extra are going to go with this guide. And they keep them on standby. Pay the extra money to keep someone on standby. But more importantly, you can't punish one portion of an industry. For example, as I am a new cripple over the last year, no walking tour has ever gotten in my way, ever. But the witch house and clients, they get in my way all the time, because there's no one there to control anyone around that building. The people going into the graveyard you decided to take over, they get in my way all the time, and when one of the employees there tells me to piss off because of it. Plain and simple, they must also be subject to these fees and trainings. Just because they work for you doesn't exempt them. They have to follow these as well. Otherwise, you're punishing one portion of an industry just because one moves and the other's stationary? Not to mention the people calling themselves museums around here, who get in the way of people walking, or wheelchairs, all day. And I don't see you trying to get money out of them. It needs to be a universal policy, or not at all. And it's as simple as that. And that includes, for example, your teachers can be exempted from the licensure, but they're not exempted from any safety fee. And since you made the teared fees a safety issue, they're required to do it too. And it's as simple as that, because they are not exempt, under state or federal law, from anything you decided to make a safety issue. You decided to make this a safety issue. By the way, you can't change it, now that I've informed you. So plain and simple, you need to either include them, or violate the law. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. I'm Giovanni, I think everybody knows me by this point. So, yeah, a few things I want to echo on the training. I was there in San Yon, I had to take sensitivity training every year, so, annual training. I don't think anyone's really arguing with that. I have to take it for the SAG-AFTRA Union, too, in New York, so, that's a no-brainer. I'm kind of fine with that. There's a few things I did want to clarify. You added something to the ordinance about crossing at a crosswalk with an activated light. Can I just get clarification on that? What do you actually mean? Because there's no activated lights on Washington Street, so, how are we going to get across?
Correct, yeah. So that was just to add language that if there is an activated pedestrian light at a crosswalk, and one without, near each other, the preference is to use one. So the word preference...
Okay, kites, that whole thing. Okay. Well, yeah, that makes sense, but just so everybody knows, there's no activated lights on Washington Street, and on a lot of streets in the downtown area. So we'll be going in big circles in some cases, but... The other thing I want to point out is, we talked about the fees to death. There's, the estimate this year is 62.5, what the mayor said. And I heard Beth's analysis of how they came to these numbers. Most people, most of the tour guides, need to take the fee for 40 people, because, Beth was alluding to this too. So you're going to take 40. If you have 200 guides, you push in 70. I think, I heard one time, somebody say there was 300. I think you said 175 tonight. So it's like, what is the real number? Because if you're looking at just kind of covering your costs and breaking even, you're actually, you know, going way over the top on it. So if it's close to 300, you're talking about $100,000, and you're only estimating 62.5. So I think those numbers should be adjusted. And I don't think anyone is arguing about, you know, there is a big jump in fees. Nothing's been addressed for 18 years. But OLA is going to have a meeting soon, or they did have it, on raising fees on permits for electricians, or for getting electrical permits, for getting plumbing permits, and all these other permits. And none of those are going up 3,500%. So, and I don't know where those should be, but they're not even anywhere close to what the guide fees would be. So I think that's really unreasonable. And then, the other thing I did want to mention, I don't know, I think I got that. But anyway, once again, I do have employees. I don't have as many as Beth. I have about 20. I do pay workers' comp. I do pay, I have liability insurance, two different types of liability insurance, because we need to get them. So, established companies like mine, like Beth, like some of the others here, have to pay a lot more fees. And the people that you really got to be worried about are the people that are not in this room. And that's the problem. And I know a lot of you have addressed that, but that's what you have to worry about. And they're the ones, I've had my guides yelled that by some of these other companies. One of them, my guide said, hey, can you move away 20, you know, not 25 feet? We, no, don't use that. But he said, could you just move away? And the guy said, screw you. And I know who it was, and I know what company they work for. I won't say the name. But that's what they said in front of their own people, so I just wonder how many tips they got that night. But this is some of the action that we're getting out there on the street. So you got to go after these other companies. I know what you said about, kind of like, having companies in-town, out-of-town. I would love to see that, but I don't think it's legal. But, Chamber of Commerce, you have, if you're a member, and then you go to an event, you get a discount, so that's kind of in your vein, what you're saying. So I get that. I'd love to see it, but I don't think it can happen. But I don't know what you can do about the out-of-town companies, getting them to conform. If there's a tour association, if there's a way you can get it in legally, and say that everyone's got to be in the tour association. That would be a big help. And at least, if there's multiple tiers, an executive board, a secondary board, or two different levels, some people don't have to attend the meetings, but then they get all of the advisories, all of the notices, and that would be exceptionally well. And then there can be just a standard group. It's going to be a hard sell. going to be a hard sell for everyone in town, for all the tour companies. There's a lot of tour companies that are already kind of on board with this. It's be a matter of getting all the other ones. So just something to consider. But, but thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Just to answer the question about the fee analysis, there were in 2024, so far year to date, 175 licenses have been issued. And last year in 2023, there were around 200. And also, we all just received this fee analysis today, but I'll make sure it's available for the public as well.
Thank you.
Any further comments? If you are joining us via Zoom land, I will try to take public comment. If you'd like to make it, please use the raise hand function. If anyone else in the room would like to make comment, feel free. Tom, I see your hand is raised. I will allow you to speak. And we'll probably get feedback.
I have just a couple of comments on those things. I definitely think the industry should be self-sustaining, as in, you know, like the mayor said, the public shouldn't be supporting it. You know, if it's costing 62K, then that should come from the industry because they're still making a profit on top of that. So I think the fee should be, if that's what the fee is required to do that, that's what the fee should be. One other suggestion I have was instead of eliminating that number 11, saying you have to stay 25 feet, they shouldn't get closer than 25 feet, what about some kind of a thing saying they shouldn't co-mingle with another group? So, you know, they can't compress too, or they should, you know, try to maintain separation between groups, not try to put a hard number on it because then you just get arguments, but allowing them some way to encourage them to maintain separation between groups to prevent the nasty comments that can fly back and forth. And I agree with others that have said, I think a bigger problem is the outdoor tour, is the outside-of-town tour groups. Because I've seen, you've been walking around the common, you see a bus stop, 55 people will get off with a quote-unquote tour guide and they zoom off around, spewing all sorts of nonsense. I've heard really interesting things about the history of Salem, Salem coming from them. But and then, you know, but there's no licenses or nothing like that. They just seem to jump off and do it. So I think the enforcement of the regulations need, there needs to be definite attempt to make sure the enforcement is equitable, both for the in-town tour groups, which I think tend to follow the rules much more closely than the out-of-towners. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If anyone else on Zoom, just use the raise hand function. I'm not seeing any. And I'm hearing echo. Counselor Verella?
I'm assuming you're looking for a motion. Did you want to say something?
Sure. So I'll just do a recap for what we've done so far this evening. We have had three motions, three amendments that all passed. The first one was to strike number 12, which was the two tour groups not being within a certain amount of feet that has been removed. The second one was to amend number three to add the preference, word preference, to cross at a light with an activated pedestrian crossing. The third amendment was to amend number eight in section 4030, which is the prohibition section, to add Ocean Ave from summit to shore. So those were the three amendments that were made and passed this evening. There was also a request for, let me do a counselor for City Solicitor Renard, to draft language around training, the training language that we have in here, both in the application process and the prohibition process, to make that training an annual training and to kind of assess out the details that we've discussed this evening. The one that was stricken was section 11, not 12. Thank you. Any else? Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I can make a motion that this matter remain in committee.
See, Verella moves that the matter remains in committee, seconded by Counselor Harvey. Set a second. Further discussion? I mean, we, so we do have that outstanding item from City Solicitor Renard. We can, since we're under discussion, we can have it remain in committee and meet again to discuss that one final edit, or we could do it on the floor. Discussion? I think we, I think we could probably, let me ask City Solicitor Renard, when you would be able to get that amended language for us around training? That's probably a better question. Prior to our meeting on Thursday. Okay. Counselor Verella?
Thank you. With that, I'd like to withdraw my motion. And I'd like to, since I think we're going to get the language back before Thursday, I think it's reasonable. So I'd like to withdraw my motion and make a new motion that this go for a positive recommendation for first passage as amended.
Counselor Verella moves that this matter be referred back to counsel for first passage as amended. Second, seconded by Counselor Davis. Under discussion. Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to verify that, did we also, was there agreement on the fact that the training has to occur before the license is given? Just want to make sure that we've.
Sure, that's a good point of clarification. So the notes that I, I don't know where I put them. The notes that I had around training were that, well, the language now says the prohibition that the training has to happen before the tour starts. So I don't think there was a request to amend that. Yep.
It's not the same as before the license is given. They could be given a license before they've had the training. And then it's like, how do you know? So all I'm saying is just.
The, like, make sure they don't have their badge before.
Right. Gotcha. Okay.
If there are any other parts on the training that you'd like to send over to, please get those to City Solicitor Renard before tomorrow, Wednesday. Counselor Harvey?
Yeah, I just want to check to make sure that Beth is going to check into whether or not we can have out-of-state fees in comparison to city local fees.
Thanks. Sure. So we'll get a report on the out-of-state licensing fee structure, if it could be different. Anything else? Okay. On the motion for this matter to be referred back to counsel for first passage as amended, made by Counselor Verella, seconded by Counselor Davis, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Counselor Verella moves to adjourn. All those in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.